Sorry for my delay in the recording. Again, this conditional use permit is based on section three, one, two, which has criteria one, whether the conditional use will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the environment or of other property in the immediate vicinity or diminish and impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood. Whether the proposed conditional use will increase local or state expenditures in relation to the cost of servicing or maintaining neighboring properties. Whether the establishment of the conditional use permit will impede the normal and orderly development of surrounding property uses predominant in the area. And whether the location and character of the proposed conditional use will be consistent with a desirable pattern of development for the locality in general. Mr. Chairman. I think the applicants are in attendance at this meeting. If you have any further questions or concerns for them.
Outstanding. Do we have any other attend, do we have any other attendees?
Yeah, we just have, we have Mr. Chambers here and Mr. Ellsworth.
Very good. In, in, in the, in that case, we will call for the, we will call for a public hearing. The first people, we will ask for people who are in favor of the conditional use permit.
I have a question first. It will probably be more permissible to allow the applicant to give a little bit of background of why they submitted the application and then we can begin the, the.
Okay. Very, very good, very good. Mr. Chambers, you are you are recognized. Please, please tell us, please tell us a little bit more about your conditional use permit application.
You're muted.
Right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I hear you.
Okay. You keep it, unfortunately, it's going back and forth. And I've, I have not heard, heard an awful lot of what was being said, but other than the, the usage that we intend for this piece of property is twofold. First of all, we would like to tutor children. Realizing that the space prohibits a large number and we're not quite sure what number that is. But again, this space is going to limit anything we do. And then on Sunday morning, again, a small group may wish to gather in that location for church services. All Nations Society is sponsored by Lutheran Church. Anything beyond that tutoring or a church. I can't think of what else it would be other than that. And if, if we've got more people than what the ordinance will allow, I guess we'll go look for larger space, but that's what we have in mind for right now. If I have not covered of any, anything that you may ask for that the pastor of and the president is on the Zoom meeting with us. So I'll ask him to comment on it also.
Very good.
Pastor, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. If everyone can hear me, I'm having a little trouble hearing also, but I'd say Bob's description is accurate. There will be, we will probably also try to do some smaller ESL and conversation partner type things also. But it's really just a, a site where we're beginning to launch some mercy work in the community with some people there. So, yeah.
Unless the, unless the committee has any other questions, that's, that's our story.
Very good. Do we have any? So we don't have anyone else in attendance. Any, any city of Clarkston residents either, either opposed or in favor of this?
There's, there's one, me. Amy Medford.
Hi, Amy. I can't see your face.
Sorry. It's, I have a terrible cold. Nobody wants to see me right now. Um, I just wanted to, it's Amy Medford, Roland Street. And I wanted to speak in favor of granting the cup to this group. There, it seems like what they're doing is keeping in line with whatever else is going on in that area. They're small. And they've agreed to stay small within the parameters of the code. And I don't think you can ask for anything better. Somebody that's going to come in, use the facility within the regulations that you've asked for and to keep to the rules. And I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to encourage after school tutoring. There's always a need for that. And there's always you know, it's great to have more opportunities to help the kids that are in need. Small Sunday gathering sounds fine. They're going to keep it small and keep it within the community and make whatever changes they need to follow that. I think sounds great. Always looking for ESL. I want to make a selfish pitch. If you guys could look into offering a women's only ESL. Many of the Afghan refugees can only, the women need ESL, but they can only meet with other women. And there's a significant shortage of that currently being available, being offered in the city within walking distance.
You got it. You got it. Yeah.
But I think this is a great opportunity and something that the city should encourage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the committee have any questions for these gentlemen?
Yes, Herbert, my only concern, and I want to make sure that all the safety parameters have been covered as far as how many you, what's the allowable amount of people you can have in the space. Have our safety, safety precautions been addressed? Just want to make sure you guys are safe inside the building. Have all those been addressed and covered?
I, I have a question for Director Kawi. I keep hearing small. What is the allowed amount of people?
That's the question that we have. Because there was no set number of what their definition of small is.
Okay. What's the definition for the city of Clarkson of small in that particular space?
Well, it would depend on, again, it depends on the youth and the number of participants that they will have inside the structure. Right now, it's based on square footage. I know that currently there is a tutoring service by Mr. Briano that's already occupying two of the offices that are currently in the space. Also, he has a tax service in the, in this location as well. So there are currently two businesses that are occupying the spaces that he says that this new applicant will be using.
Now, so he is, there, there is no longer any other business using the space aside from us. That, that's, that's not going to be happening anymore.
Oh, okay. Because we have not received that information from the city and we so Briando has renewed business licenses for those locations currently. So only go by the current information that we have.
Okay.
So, so let me get this, let me get this straight, Mr. Chambers. There's no business, that, that building at that building at four, three, two, zero East Ponds is currently unoccupied?
Both sides? Or is it a duplex?
It, so there's, there's kind of two buildings on the property, if that's what you're referring to, that are separate. He did have some tutoring happening inside of two of the offices inside of the place. And we were actually running that forum a little bit. And, but we've, we've agreed that that he would cease to facilitate a tutoring program because our plan is pending your guys' approval, you know, is for us to, to launch the tutoring program. So he's had some false starts. I don't think he's been able to get traction with it, I think.
Who's he?
Birhanu, Birhanu Nune is his name. He's our landlord. He runs a real estate and tax agency that's kind of next door. I think he runs it. I don't want to speak for his business. I think it's something like that.
How many youth and what are being tutored on a daily basis in between what hours?
So right now, zero. Our, our hope is over the, over the past, because, because we've had pastors and church members interacting with the Clarkson community for, well, I mean, we're Lutherans. We've been doing it for generations, but we've, we have about 30s or so kids that we serve on a regular basis. And we are, we would love to expand. Our space would not hold any more than that in any way. And I don't think we can do effective tutoring for 30 kids in that space with the so we'll, we'll have to limit it quite a bit. So we're thinking that we will be have, have some general hours, but we're hoping our touring will be Thursday nights and Sunday afternoons. A couple, couple hours total for the, the time that we're together, including some food and things like that.
And how will the kids get to and from, what's the big, like, I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to get my head around.
So, so my experience, let me, to, to, to familiarize you, I, I helped manage an after school tutoring program for a place called Christian Friends of New Americans in St. Louis. It's a similar Lutheran mission society and are largely what we had to do, there's always some people that would walk, but we would be transporting people. So we have our own van and we have insurance and, and things like that, that we will be transporting the kids ourselves. That's what we usually do for, for things with the kids.
Okay. You say Thursday, so you would have tutoring Thursday and Sunday. And it's 30 kids. How many kids each, each section?
I think, I think that we can handle 15 in that space.
15 on Thursday, 15 on Sunday.
15. Yeah, yeah. That, that's kind of what we're hoping. I don't think that we'll prob, our plan is to have, I don't want to say applications because well, you know, if this, you know, we can have 15 people for the first one and 15 for the second. And we're trying to do not one-on-one tutoring, but two-on-one is, is generally pretty good for homework, after school kind of tutoring.
Thank you. So you, so we're talking, so I guess you're saying at max, you're going to have 15 youth. And so plus your adults that are tutoring. So you need seven to eight adults. Right? Okay. So, and then what, if you're doing the Thursday tutoring, what are the hours for that? Well, I guess what would the hours be for both, for all of the activities? So you have a Thursday evening, Sunday worship and Sunday tutoring.
Right now, there's not going to be any kind of worship service for sure. I mean, if, if that, if that's something that grows out of this, we would like to on Sunday mornings. We do include chapel type things with our tutoring. If we're people who want to, it's not a necessary thing that people have to attend in any way. But the, the tutoring hours will be on Thursday. We will use the space from about one to five. That includes people being there to set up and people going to get kids and people cleaning up and preparing food and stuff like that. And on Thursday evenings, our plan, we will be using the space from about four to eight with, and that also includes people showing up, preparing, taking kids, coming back and taking stuff down.
What are the kids' ages?
They range everywhere from, I mean, like two and three. They're too young for tutoring, but people bring their, their little, you know, sister along all the time and stuff to about 15 to 16.
Mr. Kawaii, what are the daycare licensing requirements for this? Anything?
Yes, there. Yes, there is. This is the tutoring service and previously Mr. Briando is familiar with this process because as I did say before, he is licensed to have his tutoring business and he has not notified the city of Clarkson that he has not wanted to keep his business as such. But there is a particular number of kids and that are supposed to be in the building at one time, based on this square footage, which is one, 1,115 square feet. Currently, based on the information that you have in the packet, PNC members, this is the layout of the current building. It has a one bathroom that's currently supposed to be used as a unisex bathroom, a patio, a break room, a waiting area and two offices located in this, in this, in this building. Currently, the information that we have that was submitted says that they will not be updating or making any changes to the property. If that is the case, it will not be able to hold 15 people gathering at one time in this location based on the square footage.
Does it say there's only one bathroom in the paperwork you said? Cause I know there's two. There's one that's handicapped accessible and one that's, well, probably could be, but it's around a corner. So.
Oh, a half bath?
Yes, yes. No, no, I, yeah, I think there's the half bathroom is handicapped accessible. That is correct. Yes. As a sink and a toilet. That is correct. Yes.
I'm seeing two. I'm seeing two.
Yeah. And I think that based, based on what the requirement is for the state and when the fire marshal goes in, there are particular requirements bathroom has to have since there is adults and children in, in this facility.
Yep. Irregardless of whether there's one or two bathrooms with the, the, the space amount is still 15 people is not, is too much?
With the, with the offices also? Because we will be using the other offices also. Those are ours. We're paying rent for those. We, cause, because are those, are you including the offices also in that size? And space?
Director Kawi?
Ask that question again. I'm sorry.
Are you also including the offices, the two side offices in that space? Cause those are ours also.
Those are the two offices that we are referring to because the meeting, the meeting break in waiting area is not considered office space. So it's really allocating these two sides of this office space. I don't, and if it was the tutoring service, let me clarify for you. Based on with the chair, McFarland did show before, the two office spaces were the approved spaces for the tutoring service. This office space that's to the left of the side was where the Mr. Briando had his tax service business located in that area. The meeting room break area, as he did state, was like a kitchen area, which cannot be used as a room. So we were not understanding how that this area could be set up when co-compliance actually went in this location to see how you could set up for a place of assembly before this application was submitted. These areas currently are, are being occupied as far as we are concerned. Because your landlord, Mr. Briando, has not committed that he no longer wants to use these offices or this, or either one of these spaces for his own personal businesses that he has, that he has currently has licenses for. So I guess that is where the confusion is right now. Because based on his uses, your number of applicants that you are proposing that will use your space of 15 to 30 will not be able to accommodate in this space at 1,115.
If, if we had the full space, would it accommodate if we had all of the, if, if you were satisfied that he wasn't using the, that space, if we had the use of the offices and that? Cause that, what, what, what you're calling a meeting room is a big open space. That's where we were planning on during the bulk of the tutoring is setting up tables in there. And having people sit down. Would that, would that change anything?
Well, that is the condition that we, we put on Mr. Briando because he was trying to be the tutoring service. I'm sorry if you can't hear me, the tutoring service without, with this break room in this waiting area because it goes right as soon as you open the door, there is this meeting area. You know, right here and where we call, where some may call a breezeway or a hallway, getting to the two offices to the right and to that one office to the left. If you don't use the space, he will have to take away all the additional uses. And you're calling that one space a place of assembly for, for church service, but you're also having it for tutoring. Again, it goes for the space to the number of adults that will be actually, you know, performing the classes. And the number of children that you have. That is a bright from the start. They do have requirements that they have if you're submitting as a daycare or as a school, or if you're just a tutoring service, then your office space only, then you're, you know, you're limited as well on the number of children that can be in that space at one time.
Okay. Director, I'm trying to understand where is this tutoring going to take place? In the offices or in that big room?
Both. All. So we, we, we are renting that entire space. Our hope, you know, and I'll try to clear this up with Birhanu. But, but our hope is to use the, the offices and that the, the open space there also. Because it's kind of when you open the door, there's not really, I mean, he had it kind of set up with like some divider. So it looked like a breezeway, but when you open the door, it's really just a big open room. And then against the back wall, there is a little spot that has like a sink and a refrigerator. But there's no stove or oven or, there might be a microwave. I don't know if there's, I don't think there's a microwave, but yeah.
So including that big break, that big area and the two office spaces, Director Kawi, what is the amount of students that they would be allowed?
Let's go back to if we're considering tutoring. Right now, it would be one in each one of the offices. One adult and one to two students to be in those offices.
Okay.
And that's a current, and that's based on the current approval that we have for the landlord being licensed or having a business license as a tutoring service in those two, in those office spaces. So you have one adult and maybe two chairs for tutoring.
That's in the offices only?
That's in the offices and of course, not negating what Mr. Ellsworth had said, and then to the left, the tax service, which is, you know, one-on-one, one in the world. Teenagers work today too, so they could have taxes.
Now, have the applicant applied for the tutoring license?
Yeah, not Mr., not Mr. Ellsworth.
That's what.
Based on the current information that we have for the city of Clarkson. And right now we do have two current licenses in this location.
But that's not, it's two licenses, but could he use those licenses or do he have to apply for new licenses?
Yes, Mr. Ellsworth will have to apply for his, because his business is separate, but Mr. Briando has submitted.
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused with this because the application said is the place of assembly in the, at the beginning in our mouth meeting and also at the beginning of this meeting. Now we are talking of tutoring center and what is the primary?
So let, I can speak to that. I know this is a little confusing. We are a mission society, which is a little weird because our goal is to get to know people and ask them what they need and try to provide it. We've been like, we make, we make a lot of friends and, and we, we just get to know people. And what we've done in the past is we've done in-home ESL classes and, and helped people out in their homes. We found that to be very easy and people really like that, that the ease of that. And as we've been working with, with, with the kids, they've been asking us and saying, hey, we need help with homework. And so sometimes people will be able to go to the house, but we're trying to find a place where we can get these kids together to provide it at their request, kind of. And so as, as a mission society, we want to show the love of God through mercy work to people, right? And, and, and encourage whatever comes from that. And, and so this is kind of developing as through the process of interacting with people. I know, I know that it's, it's a little vaporous, but I, I didn't know that we needed to turn in a tutoring license or anything. I would, I would have loved to know that. I would have been on it a long time ago. But yeah.
Yeah, you, Mr. Ellsworth, he would not have been able to submit for a business license for tutoring because your applicant, your application did say that you were just a place of assembly for a mission society. So your application did not specifically say that you would be providing tutoring services. So we were not, you know, able to, to analyze your application. We were only able to analyze.
That makes sense. No, I know. I didn't know. I wasn't blaming you. I wasn't saying that you should have told me. I was saying, I wish I had known. I would have been on it. I didn't know. It's not your fault. And no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. Yeah, I know.
The reason I'm asking is twofold. One is of course, the focus of the place. The other is if we, I was thinking more of the traffic viewpoint, if it was a place of assembly, now we are turning into a tutoring center. And that may be less. That's why I was trying to ask that.
So it's not, our hope isn't only to be a tutoring center, right? Our hope is to be a place of assembly where people can gather for various reasons if they need something, right? Because we do have our vicar, who is soon to be an ordained pastor. He's a member of the Clarkston community. And we have some other pastors who have been involved, who are, who are, who are there. So, you know, while it is a place of assembly, while we do want to do tutoring, we do want to be able to look at doing other things also in the, in the future that might help people in general, whether those be, you know, one thing that we do is we go and we help out at the Grace Village Clinic a lot. We, we help at a table there. And so if there's other things that we can see, other needs that people present to us, we would love to be able to address those using our space if we're able to, you know, legally, when, you know, whatever that might be. And so, so like, for example, the mission society that I worked for in St. Louis, they offered women's knitting classes. They offered lots of ESL and computer training. We have a uh church with a school that wants to donate computers for us to distribute to kids and stuff like that. And maybe have some on the property if we can help. Um I I'm feeling like we're already uh outgrowing the 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 property before we even have the business licenses. I'm talking to you honestly. Um but uh you know, that that's I don't know if that answers your question, sir, or not uh in any way.
No, you are thinking more of a community center rather than really place of worship.
To some extent, yes, I would say that's true. Um we do want to have worship there. We want to have that available for people who want it, right? I I wouldn't I anyone's available to be served and loved, no matter if they want to join us for anything like that, of course. Um but uh we we want to be multifaceted if we're as we're able to. Um we would like to maybe do some garden beds and let people, you know, use have a have a little garden plot, maybe. Um I don't know if that I maybe I shouldn't have said that, but uh but uh I don't I but no, I'm joking. Um but you know, stuff like that, kind of simple. We want to start small. We're 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 uh uh a few area churches in Coming, Tucker, here in Atlanta. Uh Rivercliff uh or well, a few areas that 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 have a few people that want to get involved and help people. Um and so that's what we're trying to do. Yeah.
Okay, Director Cowie, I still now let's go back to the initial request as a place of assembly. You still, what is the number amount of people if if it were just that?
Um the office it's it's not the people, it's actually the number of um like space. The space that you have, how you're trying to assemble. I I can't calculate that number until I know that number, but now that we have fifteen, there can be no. It's almost like you're trying to accommodate for the number of spaces. So you're you will look at parking, not the spaces in the building. Because that's when the fire marshal will come in based on the use. And they inspect and say, this is your use and this is your maximum capacity load.
That's right. For a place of assembly, not tutoring. He would have to um yes.
And 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 that will um if Mr. Um Ellsworth. Um that will also be based on specifically what he is asking for, the use to be. Um there are several uses that he's, you know, proposing for the property. So we will have to break that down and evaluate on what what use is most important for you. Because once. The conditional use permit is a condition of a use in a zoning district that will not be outright permitted. So it's almost like you're asking for a special, you're asking for a special request. So specifically, once we put that approval. On a specific piece of property, it stays with it. Until another applicant comes in to remove that condition. Because it is a conditional use permit. So if you're a place of assembly and you want to do tutoring or a meeting class. Or garden beds or, you know, how you know, how we grow. I like to grow um how we grow or um whatever, you know, English as a second language. If that's what you're gonna do for your classes, then that's what you could do for classes. A place of assembly where you're trying to have worship in our community is considered. A church. That's a different that's a definition and classification and a set of requirements. I hope I'm not confusing you.
But it well, actually, I'm a little confused cuz it seems like we are deciding. The app your request is a place of assembly, but we're deciding on um.
Tutoring center.
On tutoring, so this, I don't know, this seems a little confusing.
No, it's just.
Maybe he should have resubmitted for tutoring.
Well, so we would like to do more than just tutoring. Here's what this makes sense. This makes sense is if um is there a better term for that would help you guys? Like like uh one gentleman mentioned, community center. Does that better describe what we're doing to for you? Because we do want to include tutoring amongst other. Possible activities as we grow, right? This is the base level. We're just getting started. We do think that we could do some other things, but we've decided because we have all these kids, although the school year is ending very quickly. Um but we have all these kids that 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 we work with so regularly. And we're just trying to provide a space for them. Uh if if i- if tutoring is not on the table this year, that might make sense that we, you know, maybe. Get guy have to go through and be an organization that is existing and then say, can we do tutoring? Is that does that make more sense? Um like if you had a church in the community that wanted to do tutoring. They would they they would have to come to you doing, hey, we need to do uh after-school tutoring tutoring. Would they have to do that?
They're already considered a place of assembly.
So if there's a place of assembly, can they start doing tutoring without? I'm just I'm just trying to figure out what's what 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 you need.
Oh, I don't want to have to um yeah, answer the question for you. Um but they're already considered a place of assembly. So when you assemble, once they got that use of place of assembly. They used all of the uses that a place of assembly could use as a classroom. Because a place of assembly is based on seats. How many seats will you have in that location? What is this, you know, and again, that calculation is based on the square footage and what is your maximum capacity load that you can have for that particular building?
So his applicant is his applicant's request is okay for a um including tutoring. Since he's applying for a place of assembly.
But that's two separate um la- uh applications because, yes, yes. Because you're trying to have classes, yes. That's why you put a mission society with a a place of assembly. But you're the church is different.
In other words, if we want to have worship there. Oh, I see, a place of assembly for church. That's how it's written, I see. You're right.
Oh, I just um I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. I want to jump in and just um I don't want to go too much further down rabbit hole over, you know. Do we have uh the permission to tutor, right? Because that's another thing. This is a place of assembly, but I do think we should be, you know, uh you know, and 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 I I appreciate the applicants and the great work you're doing. Our job is to decide whether or not the application meets the criteria. You know, we we aren't here to give our opinion. We're here to determine, does it meet the criteria? So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. And so um I I would I wanted to ask Ms. Quai, have we heard from any of the um neighbors or anything in that area? Have we done any parking? Um do we know anything more about parking needs or anything like that?
We've gotten um sorry to say, we've gotten complaints about how parking is on those Sundays. Um when there is quote-unquote church services. Um they're parking on the streets and in the um designated parking areas that are spilling over. Um on that small street of West. Westminster. I hope I got that.
And this is for uh this is for the assemblies that are already occurring before it's been allowed by the city and after the city has given.
We we are we we did have some assemblies before we were aware, but our. Um I think Bierhanu was in the past having a church, his home church meeting there. Um and they had a lot of people there. We we never had more than two cars on the property, two or three at a time. I know that. So I would I I think that's something from his use of the space that he had something going on with his home church that was meeting there. Um that was not.
Who's applying, him or you guys?
I'm applying. I I he was he was using the property cuz there's a large parking lot, huh?
So he never applied.
I don't.
And and he has a.
I don't know.
Assembly group is completely different from your assembly group, not the same people.
When we we got a cease and desist letter from the city of Clarkston telling us not to gather on the property. And we have not gathered on that property since we got that letter from you guys.
But when you were gathering before, was it the same group of?
No.
Participants.
He was meeting there on Sunday mornings. We had a small group of people on um Sunday afternoons that we were some kids that we were going over some songs for uh children's. Christmas uh program that we had here at Grace in Atlanta that the kids uh from Clarkston were participating in. And so we were using it singing songs and stuff like that, but we drive people there and uh. Um I we never had more than a few cars in the parking lot at a time, I know that.
And you have a two-year lease, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you have a little over a year left in that lease right now?
That is correct.
And what have you been doing with the property up until for the past year on?
Waiting for it to get approved. Um you know, not a whole lot, really. Uh we 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 saw the opportunity to get the property be at a very inexpensive cost. Because our landlord appreciates our, he likes that we're Lutheran, actually. I don't know. He said, oh, we love Lutherans. Uh he's not even a Lutheran, but um he he liked he and he he was sympathetic to our our desires. And so he offered us a very reasonable price, what what that 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 we thought was wonderful. And so we took him up on it immediately and started the process of applying for business stuff there. Um yeah.
Miss Cowie.
My my concern is that the the model itself, which is obviously, you know, all the things that you want to do are great. Is that the model itself, it's meant to grow and this space has no potential for growth. And I don't know how it lives in that space. And I know you you're saying you want to be small, but you don't really want to be small, you want to grow. And I don't know how that happens in this space, but I do understand. Uh you know, the circumstances, you have a lease, you know, I I you know, I'm just anyway, I I just don't know. I just don't know if we're meeting our criteria here, but um but but let's continue.
Well, we really are not. We're not meeting the criteria because um Director. Cowie brought to my attention is a place for assembly for church. So that needs to be changed. Cuz he wants to do other things.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, Ms. Cowie, I I'd like to ask a question. Uh. Maybe it's directed for you, but how much, what would be the necessary? Uh things to do to change it, even though they would have a small group of fifteen people to to read them. To redefine it as a place of assembly. That way they can have the fifteen uh people uh kept to worship or they can do tutoring. Uh you know, is there is there a process they have to do to make it a place of worship? Uh you know, a place of assembly? Or is it just building just too small for that?
It's not. It's again, it's based on the number of attendees. I know you're saying that, oh, this one thousand one hundred and fifteen square foot building can hold. I'm just gonna say, you know, the maximum load may be a hundred people. But it's the use and how you get in, how you get out, how you assemble. And the way that the additional spaces are located. If it if the. I'm not gonna say because I don't do the inspections every day, so that's fire marshal for them to do those inspections. So I can't give you a definite number, but I understand the request that Mr. Um Ellsworth is trying to have. Um and try to define a number that can actually go in there. The maximum capacity load is determined by the fire marshal's um inspection for the property.
We don't know what that number is, is that correct?
I think I I I could almost tell you cuz they have it written on a board in the room. I feel like there's somewhere that it's written down. But I can't remember.
That's fine, that's fine. Um. Am I seeing this uh and this is what I'm looking?
Yeah, that's us.
Am I correct when I only see one fire extinguisher?
Um that I think that might be true. I think there's also happens to be one under the sink, but officially like on the wall, I think that there's one, yeah.
Okay.
I think.
And you mostly, you mostly have foot traffic, so we're not really too concerned about automobile traffic, is that correct?
And there is a parking lot with um.
There is, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the property.
Okay, okay.
Um but you're mostly talking foot traffic, mostly from the apartments up and down the street, is that not?
That would be mostly correct and and in the van, we we have a van that we can transport people with, yeah. And uh so I think that that actual parking would be minimal because people will be. Either being picked up with the van or with the one of our uh you know, certified tutors, um something like that, yeah.
And Mr. And Mr. Nunez no longer um conducting any kind of services there?
He is not, he is not.
Okay. But he wa- but he was in the past and that's presumably where the Sunday traffic issues were arising.
Think I I mean, I anything could be possible, I don't know, but I think so. That's what I that cuz I we I don't think we have enough people there to park anyone on the street or anything like that, you know. Cars.
Does anyone, does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Clark, are you satisfied?
Yeah, I was kind of disturbed on this uh Cowie's answer. Something happened to the sound system. I didn't hear her completely. If you don't mind, I'd like for her to repeat what she said, focus a little more clear.
I was just doing the research on the current um certificate of occupancy that was issued um for this business in twenty twenty. Um and it it does not have the maximum occupancy load listed on here. But it did say that it must follow the um Article seven or the Fire Marshal Code. That changes or alterations in the type of permitted use or occupancy without approval. Has to be um resubmitted for resum- uh inspection to the fire marshal. So again, Fire Marshal based their maximum occupancy load based on the use. If you have two uses, they go in and inspect those two uses and where they will be located. So I can't, you know, give you the number off the top of my head without their, you know, calculations. But it's their inspection on what the use is. I think today the question is, as um Ms. Williams had stated before, what is the use? What are the applicants submitted for one use, but we're negotiating for another use? For additional uses. What is the use because that condition that we place, if there's an approval placed on the property. Will last with the property until that use is taken off by another applicant.
See, that's the point that I was trying to make. I I listened to you when you said the the proposed use is a place of assembly for church. That's not tutoring. That's just for one thing, so maybe it should have been a place of assembly. And then you said it would cover, you know, it can include the other um.
So Ms. Ms. Quai, the I'm sorry, the conditional use stays with the property. What even though this lease is up in one year, so another church could come in. And have a place of assembly.
Yes.
Uh yeah, I just I I I I'm just don't see, I'm sorry, guys. I just don't see how it's appropriate for this building.
How is it? How is there if we had um a certain number? Because usually churches start small, right? They start they they don't grow from ten people to five hundred in in a year or anything. Um if we if we got approved from the Fire Marshal for a certain amount for those uses, right? Whether it's for general assembly or for tutoring or for for different things. If if we were able to stick with that, does is that kind of, does that make sense?
But see, your proposal is you're proposing for a place of assembly of for church. Director Cowie, please help me with this. That means it's just for church. Now, if he just put a place of assembly, that could include other things. Am I correct?
Um a place of assembly can go with um.
But he said for church.
I did.
I mean, it says it says for church on here. Or on our proposed use um.
I didn't, I don't think I filled in church, I could be wrong. Um because because we do want, I mean, we do want to have people gathering and worshiping, but we're we're a mission society and. I technically if you looked at the IRS uh code bracketing that that a mission society can be considered a church. That's a very large term, church, right? Um so.
That you you're gonna have to explain it, Director. That, you, you're gonna have to explain it, Director Kyle Wee, what you just said in reference to that if they, if they propose, if they put in a, a proposal for a place of assembly and leave out church, then he can include the tutoring, all that can come under that heading. But he put, but here it says a place of assembly for church, so we thought we were just, it was just gonna be worship. Am I correct?
Well, that's the, and, and I think I did explain that, you know, in the beginning, that that's why we're only going with the information that the applicant has given us to do the analogy. So if you wanted to do other uses, they have to be analyzed based on the application. Because now I know that I made note that your hours of operation was gonna be one to four, one to four, one to five on Thursdays, but also Thursdays from four to eight. And then Sunday is worship.
Cause if we approve, if this was approved now, it's not a being approved for tutoring, am I correct? And we would make a recommendation, it's just for a place of assembly for church.
Where he will hold classes.
Okay, but then he has to apply for tutoring license.
No, he doesn't have to do that.
Right from the, um, Mister, um, Brianna did have to apply for, um, right from the start for tutoring services. And there, and during his application, they did give him a specific number of the maximum number of um, students that you can have in this location at one time. I just don't have that information in front of me, because that is his information.
We're not deciding that anyway, we just need to decide if it meets the criteria.
Perfect, and Mr. Clark again, I think it's a great community work, let me say that first. Uh, I think maybe we've gone a little bit deep, and we may be missing the meaning of what Mr. Ellsworth is trying to do, so, uh, we, we need to uh, decide on what he's really trying to do, what his plan is, even though the build, you know, the structure is small. Uh, me personally, uh, I know about ministries that have started with four, five people, and they grew to mega churches over, over years. But, uh, starting small is definitely not, starting small is a great gesture, it's a good starting point. So, uh, you know, I'm in favor of the small part, it's just that we need to redefine, or we need to define what the structure is really gonna be used for, and then, then what is the meaning? Of what, 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 like Ms. Kyle Wee said, what, you know, the building can hold fifteen people, some churches start with ten, but, uh, but uh, is there anything, is there not a proposal that need to be done? Is it another, uh, application need to be done, so he can follow the class of a place of assembly? That way he can do all the other things, uh, that, you know, the church, uh, that the ministry decided to do. But, uh, but, uh, can it be simplified, you know, where he can do the other things, let alone stay in the, uh, in the, in the parameters of the fire, fire code? Fire marshal, can that be done, is anything that can be simplified, where, where they can be classified as a, a place of assembly or ministry, where they can do a lot of things, there is too many questions about it.
Uh, finding out all those things is great, but I, I, I don't want to send applicants back to go do more work until, you know, it, to, until we determine if it meets the criteria, those things aren't the criteria.
Problem is, as Director Kyle Wee said, uh, depends on the Fire Marshal, how, what would be the capacity of that place? Now, unless you know the capacity, how can we approve for church or tutoring services, you know? But we might give an approval, but Fire Marshal might say, no, you cannot have these classes yet, or you can have one to five people, or ten people, or you can't have church service. So we need to know the capacity before we decide for this.
We would not go above capacity, I, I know that, that we would, we would abide by whatever the Fire Marshal says is, uh, is mandatory.
So this conditional use permit would be for the remainder of your lease, would it not, Pastor Ellsworth?
That, that is correct, and it would be wonderful if we outgrew the space in that time and had to go somewhere else, that would be fine with me. Um, but yeah, we have a one-year lease that we would like to honor, uh, with our landlord, yes, that's correct.
And that's, and that's, and that's how much, and that's what you have left on this lease right now, is one year, or is it a two-year lease?
About, yeah, yeah, roughly, mm-hmm.
Now you're down to one?
Yeah.
So if we gave an approval, so uh, Berendra, Felicia, Lisa, uh, Mister Clark, and Ms. Kyle Wee, if, if we gave a if we, uh, issued a recommendation, um, approving, uh, this conditional use permit, this, of course, would be contingent upon uh, the, the, uh, the Fire Marshal would subsequently make a, would, would subsequently make a and, uh, and issue a number. Would he not? Would he not, Shawna?
Again, that will depend on what the applicant is actually applying for. Right now, the analysis was for a mission society place of assembly, which is a you know, a religious institution, um, the office spaces came afterwards. So it was almost like if you want to have that space, like, we're assembling for religious reasons slash, but we have to also take into consideration the location and the impact that has in the surrounding neighborhood, or when, um, they're actually assembling. Um, again, right now, and, um, he did state ten days' release that it will be on Thursdays and Sundays. If you grow, I'm pretty sure that those days are gonna be more. And you want to use your space on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, Friday. So.
Yeah, that's correct, we would, we would like to have things to do at different times, it wouldn't always be tutoring. Um, that, you know, we have, uh, other things that we would look at, but that would be based off what the community, the people that we, we serve, um, that speak to us, uh, so, so that would, uh, probably change in that way, yeah. I, I don't, I don't know if we, it's been, it's hard to get people to tutor kids, I don't know if we're gonna be expanding past those tutoring days, uh, to be honest. I, I, I think we'd be lucky if we got the Thursday one full, I think right now we're focusing on Sunday, yeah.
Sunday for tutoring?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's where we're gonna start, our hope is to also fill up Thursday night, depending on if we have enough tutors available. Um, but, uh, yeah, yeah.
So that will be it, no church service?
Huh?
No church service?
So, uh, we, we are, will be having a service, uh, that, that is available for people on that day. I don't know if you can call it a church service, because we don't have a church, at least not according to what our church body considers a church. We will offer, it'd probably be, we could consider it a chapel service along with the tutoring, that's an optional one. Um, it'd be wonderful if it turned into a church, we'd love that, that would be great if, if people needed that and wanted that, but, um, but, uh, this is, uh, this is a very much, uh, a kind of ride the wave, um, form of mission to where we, we e-engage in a community and, uh, hear what their, their responses are, what their needs are, and try to provide and assess along the way. Um, is, so, so that it gives us a, a little bit of fluidity um, with, with the type of mercy work, cause really what, what our goal is to, is to offer mercy and human care to individuals, um, and families, uh, developing relationships, we don't want to be social workers. Uh, we want to develop friendships and lasting advocacy, um, for individuals and their families. Uh, so we won't have social workers, uh, we won't have anything like that, we'll have friends of, of families, if that makes any sense. Um, we're Lutheran, um, and, and, and I know that, I don't know, we, we've done this before. Uh, we've, uh, been, uh, serving new American communities, um, since this is, for, for a long time, um, you know, our, uh, some of our, our participants have sat on, uh, the Inspiritus or Lutheran Services of Georgia Board. Um, you, you know, we, we, we will do all these things in good order. I, 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 I'm, I am sure of that. Um, and, and we, we don't want to step on any toes, if, you know, I'm, I'm not, I, if there's a certain number of space that we can use for now, then we will abide by whatever that might be, yeah.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, I think that, oh, I think your mission is obviously noble and important, um. Uh, I, I have a big concern over the appropriateness of the building and the, and then the, what I want you to make sure you guys understand, in, and we don't approve this, by the way, the city, so it has to go to the city council, we're just recommending. And, you know, and our job is to follow the criteria, but also, you, please remember that if we change the zoning, if city council changes the zoning, it stays. If you leave in a year, anybody can come in and form a place of assembly that would and could impact the neighborhood. And then now we've done damage, you know, not you, we, the city.
Do damage to that neighborhood, a place of assembly, is that an estimation?
Allowing parking overflow onto residential streets is a problem. And we can't stop that if we have a place of assembly adjacent to a residential street. And now we've got the zoning that stays with the land. When it, when, when the tenant's gone, the zoning stays. You know, so we have to consider that too, uh, you know? And, and, you know, and so that, that's a, a big concern. Um, those are residential homes that have been covered of visits, matter of fact, they're, they're historic homes, they're, uh, they're over a hundred years old. Um, and, and the neighborhood is historical, and the people who live there don't, you know, we already know they don't want parking overflowing onto their street, they've already told us they don't want parking overflowing onto their street. So whether, whether or not you overflow parking isn't the issue, it's every tenant that comes after you also. So, you know, it's just, it's a big, it's a, it is a big deal, and I, you know, everything you're doing sounds wonderful. And I, I hope you can use the building for something. Um, I just don't know if it's, needs to be, what could be turned into a zoning for places of assembly permanently. And things could get out of control easily. Those are my concerns. And then we have the criteria. I, 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 and I feel like a bad guy right now, but I just, that's, it's, it's a big deal to residents, you know, those types of things.
It's true, because in the, you know, I have mentioned to Director Kyle Wee about these conditional use permits. I, I don't know when they're gonna stop, cause it's just that we've changed neighborhoods doing it, we're overriding the actual, you know, what that property is supposed to be used for, and I've seen it happen, you know, since I've been on the board. Where, when we grant these conditional use permits, it just turns into, um, it can turn into a mess, it really can, for the current residents, so.
Alright, is everyone, uh? Have other, have other questions been asked? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, systems check, systems. Can people, can people, I think I'm doing, I'm, I'm I'm working under this, um, crummy, uh, hotel wifi, and I'm not sure anyone can hear me, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good, um. Alright, um, in that case, I will close the questions and answers portion of the meeting, and I will ask for a motion to approve or deny this gentleman's recommendation.
Well, I'm gonna motion to deny an agreement with the staff recommendation.
Do we have, uh, would anyone like to, uh, second Ms. Williams', um, motion?
I'll second.
Alright, let's see a, uh, let's see a show of hand, who, uh, who, um, who votes to, who would like to, uh, deny this recommendation?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Felicia? Uh, Mister Clark, what say you, sir? Mister Clark? One more, uh, one more time, Mister Clark?
Couldn't hear you, Mister Clark.
Very, very good, um. Uh, Mister, uh, Mister DeCall, what say you, sir?
I deny.
Very good, I'll vote to, I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'll move to deny too, we'll have to issue a, a unanimous recommendation. Uh, I'm really.
Mister Clark said not deny, is that correct? He, he said to approve?
I, I believe that is correct, I, I think the first time we heard him say he did not want to deny, can you nod your head, Mister Clark? That you, you? He does not want to deny it, he was, he was recommending approval, yes.
He would like to, he would like to approve, um, this. It breaks my, uh, it breaks my heart, uh, uh, Mister Ellsworth, um, I'd like to, um.
Agree.
Can I, can I ask what the particular reason is for the denial, though, is it because of parking? Is it because in the future someone might use the property and park off-site?
That's a big, we, we talked about a lot of things, that was just one thing we talked about, but if you read through the criteria points, you can see a detailed explanation.
That's a big part of it, the, uh, the conditional use permit stays with, the conditional use permit stays with the property. Um, um, you guys are only gonna be there for a year, maybe, uh, maybe, uh, at the end of the year, you would renew your lease, maybe for another two years. But in three or maybe five years, that conditional use permit stays with the, stays with the property, and, um, and that would upset, that would upset, uh, most of the people on, on, on Smith Street, I'm, I'm sorry.
Have people on Smith Street have spoken against this officially and said that they do not want our property there?
No, they have, they have concerns, they have, they've had, they've had concerns with the parking uh, mostly because of what your landlord did in the past.
So, Mister Ellsworth, this is not your final decision, the planning and zoning board, um, does make their recommendation that will be submitted to Mayor and City Council. There is a meeting on April the twenty-sixth at the Works Session to discuss this further, and then the final decision is made May the third at the City Council, um, meeting. Um, we hope that you will attend the met, the April twenty-sixth meeting at seven. Okay.
Thank you. To the applicants, to both of you for attending and for the work you do.
Thank you.
Sorry to do that to you, man. Um.
Yeah, I am too. I, I think the work that you're doing is very good. It's just this property, I, I really do.
If there's no other, there's no other uh, there's no further business. To attend to, I will entertain a motion to um. I will entertain a motion to uh, to adjourn.
I move the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Very good, Lisa, we have a second uh, show of hands. I.
Aye.
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 Very good, very good. Eight seventeen P M is what I show, the meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, that was tough. All right, have a good night, everybody.
That broke my heart, you guys, I hated to do that.